Thank you. Good evening, I'm going to call the Select Board meeting to order for Monday, July 22, 2024, and note that we will be going into executive session, and we will return no sooner than 6:00 PM. Can I get a motion?
Chair, motion to enter executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect of collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Item B pursuant to General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town administrator.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Michael?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, 4-0. Thank you. To call the Select Board meeting back to order, we were in executive session earlier this evening, and we did not take any specific action on item A or B. I also want to note that as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chair prior to the start of the meeting. Seeing nobody, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody for public comment and announcement?
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity. Carolyn Kery, Community Center Director, and I was just going to announce some of our upcoming events, as you're on a two-week schedule, and well, I've already started the August ones. Just to round out this month, we do have slime making on July 25. It is actually, we had room for 25 people, we have 40 in it, and a waitlist equally as long, so we'll be doing that event again. On July 26, we have a free pasta dinner and Harwich trivia night, so brush up on that, 5:30 to 7:00 PM. We thank the Chamber for providing us with some phenomenal prizes for the Harwich trivia. We will be doing pupsicles with the police again on August 1st, 1:30. I understand there'll be fudgicles too, but, you know. That's at the community center, 1:30 on August 1st. August 2nd is the community yard sale at Brooks Park. In the event of rain, that is inside at the community center, but there will be no rain. We are doing some butterfly magic at the community center, come on over and watch. We are learning all about the metamorphosis of the butterflies. Clearly, I'm not running that program. Then we are doing, last year we did Pebbles, the snake.
Oh, yes.
Pebbles has gone away, and we have Acorn, the caterpillar. So, come on over and visit Acorn. You can paint the rocks again, and we will make them grow through our garden. We have cooking for 1 or 2 on August 9th, from 12:30 till 2:00 PM, and you do need to register for that event. They are free, but you do register. And then on August 22nd, at 5:30, we will be decorating kites, and then going outside to fly them, so come fly a kite. And on August 29th, we will have Betty Tremmel back, and she'll be speaking about Morocco. She's a very popular series, we've had her in a few times, and the room fills up each and every time. That's August 29th at 2:30. All of these events can be found on the community center website, and in our newsletter, which gets sent out, and thank you.
Nice, thank you, Carolyn. Anybody else for public comment and announcement? Sheila?
Hi, Sheila House, I'm speaking on behalf of Harwich Children's Fund, and we had a very successful event, as you all know. Circus Murca sold out all the shows. People were coming out of the tent, pouring with sweat, going, "Are they coming back next year?" It was great. So, just want to thank the whole community for coming behind us and making it so successful.
Wonderful, great news. Thank you all for all the work you put into it. Anybody else for public comment and announcement?
I have a couple, Madam Chair, if I could. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. After our last Select Board meeting, the following Wednesday, was the first stakeholder meeting for the Brooks Academy Project. And I'd just like to update the public on what had happened, this is a little while ago. First, I'd like to make sure I thank all that were involved at that meeting. It was a very productive and very positive meeting in my mind. I think Don Howell did a fantastic job as the chair, in terms of setting expectations. I think our town administrator did a fantastic job of understanding, helping us understand strategy and the path to get where we all want to go with the Brooks Academy building. And we are working on the next date for that stakeholder meeting to meet again, as well as my next office hours, open office hours with Select Board Member McCaskill, if he's going to join. I will be setting that date shortly, and I will let the public know when that will be. The other update I have is on the Special Friends Cafe. I understand that they had a fantastic meeting with our town administrator, and things are moving forward, they're setting up their 501(c)(3). I couldn't be more excited, I know the public is getting behind it, I know Cindy Williams is getting behind it, and there's just a outpouring of community support, which I think many times all we tend to deal with at this table here is the challenges and the difficulties that our town faces. But, boy, is it refreshing to see something new and exciting and community-based, get a little traction, and feel the push of the entire community behind it. So, I just wanted to bring those few things to the attention of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else for public comment and announcement?
Madam Chair.
Joe?
Thank you. This announcement comes through our conservation agent. It's a notice to the town that unfortunately, there's a harmful algae bloom that was observed in the West Reservoir, therefore, the reservoir is closed for water access. So, the statement reads, "For your safety, people and pets should not have any contact with the water in this pond at West Reservoir. Should you come into contact with the water, immediately shower with soap. If pets consume the water, immediately contact the veterinarian." The town continues to monitor the situation, and will remove the notice when the hazard dissipates, and we thank everybody for their cooperation, and hopefully, we'll get that down as soon as we can.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
No, yeah?
One more, I might as well just read it. The next Select Board meeting will be Monday, August 5th, 2024. But I would add, if there was an appetite by this board to have another meeting in between next Monday night, I'd be willing to do that. I know that we've got some things that are on the pressing and haven't had the loop closed yet, so, you know, we can maybe have a discussion about that later.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Hearing nobody else for public comments and announcements, can we move on to the consent agenda? Get a motion? Oh, and can I just note, though, on one thing, on the minutes, July 10th? And I do know that Don is satisfied with the minutes, he conveyed that to me. But the July 10th minutes, I already conveyed to Danielle, and she's conveying to our secretary that.
Very good, thank you.
There's some revisions to that.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think we can just hold that.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Select Board meeting minutes for June 24, 2024. And at this time, that's all I put a motion for.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
4-0, Joe.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes from July 8th, 2024.
I'll second with discussion, for discussion. I think there needs to be a change in Mr. Kery. His last name is spelled incorrectly regarding the West Harwich School. It's John Kery, K-E-R-Y, on our, in our minutes, but I believe it's C-A-R.
E-Y.
E-Y. Unless John Kery is working in West Harwich, and we don't know it. So, I'd just like that to be changed, and then I'd be fine with the minutes.
Okay, so, with that revision, so we get a motion, second. Any other discussion on that? Pete, did you have any comment?
No, just going to abstain, I was not here.
Oh, right, sorry, thanks. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and one abstention, so three ayes.
Thank you.
And then the 7, 10, as I said, I've conveyed those, and we'll just wait till those come back. Then item B.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the resignation of Meredith Henderson from the Harvard Youth Service Committee, effective immediately.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
4-0. C. Thanks.
Madam Chair, I vote to approve the following committee appointments as recommended by the interview committee. Apologize in advance for any names that I mispronounce. Pauline Tees, Bike Way Committee, term expires June 30, 2027. Pauline Tees, Voter Information Committee, term expires June 30, 2025. Sheila House, Council on Aging, term to expire June 30, 2025. John August, Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire June 30, 2027. Karen Dusette, Golf Committee, term to expire June 30, 2027. Patsy Ford, Brooks Academy Museum Commission, term to expire June 30, 2026. Robert Nicholson, Brooks Academy Museum Commission, term to expire June 30, 2025. Emily Milan, Voter Information Committee, term to expire June 30, 2027. And Deborah Gibson, Treasure Chest Committee, term to expire June 30, 2027.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say thank you to all nine of the new committee appointments.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with all of them.
Madam Chair, if I could, before you call the vote, just a notice to the board. Ms. Tees has one of her appointment letters, I believe it's for the bike ways, we'll make sure that you get the voter information.
Okay.
Certainly voted tonight, and we'll get that letter to you folks.
Great, thank you. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0. And now, on to the public hearing. Just get to the notice.
Madam Chair, public hearing, discussion, and vote on a new Class II Used Auto Dealer License application for Cape Cod Trucks LLC, DBA Cape Cod Trucks, 195 Queen Anne Road.
Thank you, and then we just have to...
Notice of public hearing, Town of Harwich Select Board Application for Class II Used Auto Dealer License. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 140 of the General Laws as amended, that application has been made to this board for a Class II Used Auto Dealer License for Cape Cod Trucks LLC, DBA Cape Cod Trucks, Christopher Wickstrom, owner-manager, and George McLaughlin, the fourth, owner-manager, on the following premises located at 195 Queen Anne Road, Harwich, Mass. 02645. The Select Board will hold a public hearing on the application on Monday, July 22, 2024, no earlier than 6:00 PM in the Griffin Room at Town Hall, 732 Main Street. Remote participation is available, please see the posted agenda for dial-in information, Select Board Local Licensing Authority.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's George McLaughlin, the third, not to be formal, but I, no, no, the fourth was right, Selectman Handler, he's seated right there. I am, so this is my son, George the fourth, this is Christopher Wickstrom, I'm the third. I own the property at 195 Queen Anne Road.
So, I apologize for the interruption, but there is one matter where, and yes, the lectern as well.
Yeah.
We had, the town has now received back the certified mail receipts?
I have those right here.
Perfect.
They said to bring them with us, and we have.
Great.
Excellent.
Yeah, and then if you just...
Madam Chair, members of the board, the application's complete.
Thank you. And then if you'd just use the lectern so that people at home can hear you.
Sure. Madam Chairperson, members of the board, my name's George McLaughlin, the third, and I am the owner of the property at 195 Queen Anne Road with Chris Wickstrom. You have a full agenda here this evening, so I'll be brief. I bought that property, Chris and I bought that property about five years ago, and when we bought it, it was really in disrepair. I don't know if you know the property, but it's right next to the treasure chest, and it had nine, approximately 800 square foot units, and when I bought it, there was debris all over the place, and cars and what have you, and it was funny, because my wife and I have a home at 54 Harbor Road, and I pulled in with her, and I said, "Jeez, I want you to show you the property I just bought," and she said, "Why did you buy this junkyard?" And I said, "No, it's, I'm going to fix it up, we need industrial property in town," and so we did. You know, I take great pride in what I own, as does Chris, so we spent a lot of time and a lot of money, and with the help of the town, and I got to tell you, the town was great to deal with, everybody from the building department to the water department to everything, looking out for the town's rights and making sure everything's done correctly, but it was really a great experience. So, long story short, we're all truck and car guys, and we have recognized a need for trucks, in particular, pre-admission trucks, because I don't know if you folks know anything about trucks, but post-admissions have been wreaking havoc with the computer systems and what have you, and so, our, we're obviously looking for a Class II license to sell all kinds of trucks, cars, whatever, but I think we'll probably end up focusing on pre-admission trucks, and on muscle cars, and kind of classic cars. So, bottom line is, there were two special permits, I believe, already granted at that property for, to sell cars. One was for Richie's Cars, and the other one was for a guy named Carlos Tapia, who was selling used cars there for a long time. We're going to be in Bay 10, which is on the back building, approximately 1,500 square foot, 23 and 1/2 feet clear, big space, grand-spanking-new space, and we have eight spaces back there in the back of the lot to use for inventory, and it's not going to be a, you know, it's not going to be a high-volume location, but I would imagine would sell, you know, I don't know, one or two trucks a month, something like that, maybe some muscle cars, maybe, you know, depending what happens. That's our game plan. And so, as we went through this process, as the town administrator told you, our application is now complete, we have a bond and everything, and in dealing with the planning board, they told us, "Look, you already have a special permit, so you don't have to go to the planning board, you just have to come to the Select Board to get the license." So, here we are, happy to answer any questions you have, and looking forward to hopefully opening up for business.
Thank you, thank you for that overview, it's appreciated. Any board members have any specific questions, Michael?
I defer to the public first, and then close the public hearing.
Yeah, okay. Anybody in the public want to speak? Ed?
Hi, my name's Ed McManus, and my acquaintance is of George, the third. I just met George the fourth tonight, but I have a little bit of experience with the property, you know, Rich Centrella was my repair guy when I first moved into town, and he helped me out on occasion while he was working there, and selling his vehicles. But I also, at one point with another fellow, looked at renting one of the units from the previous owner, and I guess I can't really use the first pejorative of what sort of hole I thought it was, that he was trying to rent. But quite honestly, George has just done a magnificent job in cleaning a place up, landscaping it, adding square footage to it to provide more commercial space for the town, and I think the nature of the business is pretty much not any different from any of the contractors there. It's a place that a lot of the day has trucks parked in it, which, you know, which is true of all the landscaping operations along there. So, I think it's, it'll be a benefit to the town, and a very needed service.
Thank you, Ed. So, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
4-0.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I move that we approve a new Class II Used Auto Dealer License application for Cape Cod Trucks LLC, DBA Cape Cod Trucks, 195 Queen Anne Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
I'll just add, thank you for the work you did cleaning up the space, and I commend you on the improvements. Very nicely done.
It's funny, I'll tell you, the town does a great job.
Just go up to the podium, sorry.
I have to give you a little feedback. When I was doing all the cleanup, the town has very strict restrictions there, and I've been coming to Harwich since I was five years old, and I remember the old Queen Anne Road, and, you know, I did them all, and really, when you go down Queen Anne Road, it's a lot nicer road than it was in yesteryear, so all your regulations are really kicking in. I mean, I think everybody has great pride in ownership out there, from their landscaping to everything, so everybody's heeding the word, and I think it benefits everybody.
Thank you, and thank you for complimenting staff, because it's not often done, and so they do do a wonderful job, and they're...
Oh, great job. Water Department, everybody, I'm telling you, they get back to you promptly, they really, I own a fair amount of property, and I deal with a lot of different cities and towns, and it's just been a pleasure dealing in Harwich, and I got to tell you that, it's just great, so.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate that, and good luck with everything.
Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry, wait.
Hold on, we got to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
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 4-0, nice.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, we'll go on to our joint meeting with the Board of Assessors.
Glad to hear they improved that building. We'll be coming to visit.
Calling the Board of Assessors meeting to order.
Thank you.
I'm joined by fellow assessor Bruce Nightingale, of course, everyone knows our assessing director Carleen Jones. Jay Kavanaugh could not be with us, he is still working, unfortunately, couldn't get out early enough tonight. So, we're happy to be here tonight. In your spirit of the post-town meeting view of getting articles ready, we want to be one of the first to be before you with an article for whatever is the next town meeting. In March of this year, the Division of Local Services sent out a bulletin, which comes out frequently from the Department of Revenue, and it offered an opportunity to the community. It was sent to our assessing director, it was also sent, I believe, to the Affordable Housing Trust of all groups, allowing for the opportunity to create an affordable housing property tax exemption. And as you may or may not know, the assessing department does over, close to 240 exemptions a year, senior tax credits, veterans exemptions, site impaired, we help a lot of people in this community. And having been following what's been happening with affordable housing in the last few years, with the impetus to get a shovel in the ground, we believe this program we have before you tonight will be another tool in the arsenal of affordable housing in this community. And we're hoping to solve a couple problems with this property tax exemption. You have a packet in front of you, and basically, the Department of Revenue allows a municipality to create rules for this property tax exemption, and very quickly, we're looking at creating two separate exemptions. For property that meets criteria, for both income and rent that meets affordable housing criteria, the town would offer an exemption of up to $1,000 for units less than 500 square feet. For units greater than 500 square feet, we would recommend a tax credit of $1,500. We are comfortable with that number at 1,500, because that is what our senior tax credit is, and we don't feel we should go above that. One of the benefits of this particular program is that it can be stacked. You've heard over the years, we have a lot of folks in this community who are overhoused, people who have, are seniors, who maybe lost a spouse, who are living in a three, four, five-bedroom property by themselves. This is an opportunity for some of those residents to create an affordable rental in their property, and get a property tax credit for doing so. We have, we've included in the packet the criteria of what we would do, and it is restricted in terms of income for one person, up to six people, and the affordable rents are based on possible county affordable housing numbers, from an efficiency to a four-bedroom rental. The process is similar to all of our exemptions. A property owner would need to submit an application to the Board of Ass, or to the assessing department every year. We would have to vet it, and I will say that in our discussions with our folks at the wastewater about that particular exemption, that the assessing department is the best department in town to vet these applications. We have a great staff that does that work, and Ms. Jones and her staff have been excellent in creating that. The board is tough. When we look at applications, we look at everything. We look at tax returns, we look at bank statements, and we will not approve something unless the board feels comfortable that it has been vetted appropriately. So, included in your packet was an application, that would be done. The nice part about this program, we could start it as soon as possible upon town meeting approval. We have included a sample article for you to look at, and hopefully approve, to submit to the next town meeting. Applications are available, and would be available after July 1st, and we would, they would be due by February 1st, which matches the date of our tax abatements, and like a tax abatement, we would have three months to act on an application as it comes forward. So, it falls within the timeline of when we look at our exemptions. I think it's a benefit, the board, we met three times to discuss this, we did a work session specifically to this. Wealth Fleet has a similar plan, not done by the state, Provincetown has a similar plan, but we think this is no extra cost, we're not looking for a budget item on this. Any funds from this would be taken from our overlay account, which is given to us every year, and every exemption comes out of that account. So, we're not looking for a budget item, we're looking for the opportunity to assist those who are providing affordable housing in our community. That's it in a nutshell, Madam Chair.
Thank you, that's a great explanation, and the documentation was excellent as well, so I'm going to open it up to the board for any questions. Jeff?
Yeah, sure. Okay. Thank you all for being here. What I, I think this is much needed. You mentioned in the packet that it's limited to 30 per year. Can you tell me, who came up with that number? Is that you, or is that the state, is that...
That was us. The municipality has the right to create certain rules to work with. We want to walk before we can run.
Right.
And to be honest with you, if we have 10 in the first couple of years, I'll be ecstatic.
Yeah.
But I think it's a model, and we, in the Town of Harwich Board of Assessors, have liked to be at the forefront of making changes like this to create it in other towns. Again, affordable housing is everyone's buzzword, it's everyone's topic of discussion, and this is an opportunity to do something immediately to continue to provide that in this community.
Well, clearly, well thought out. Thank you for your presentation.
Michael?
Madam Chair, I move that we support and create an article for the 2025 Annual Town Meeting on an Affordable Housing Property Tax Exemption.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Pete? Oops, sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, please.
I noticed in your draft article, it looks like it says tax credit of 500 to 1,000. You had down below, it's 1,000 to 1,500.
Thank you for pointing that out. We met last week.
Okay.
And we adjusted that. We didn't feel that the 5 and the 1,000 was enough to create an incentive, and part of this program is to create an incentive for folks to create this affordable housing. So, we upped it to 1,000 and 1,500. Thank you for pointing that out.
No, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Of the mover of the motion. He had said 2025, and I just requested, there is going to be a town meeting this fall, that it be considered to be put on the town meeting, so we could enact it this year.
I changed my motion to reflect that statement. However, I would need to know, and the reason I put "create" in article is because I want it vetted by town council before I approve what's in the packet.
Absolutely.
I would want to know if we could do a tax exemption at a fall town meeting and not an annual. That would be my other follow-up.
Good point, yeah.
I am relying upon the materials provided. I didn't see any indication in their guidance, but we'll double-check that.
Okay.
And then if I could, Madam Chair, through you. So, in the, in the sample article, it appears that we want to adopt National Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5O, not 5-0? Because it looks like we use zero. So, I'll work with council on this draft, which is excellent, and we'll see if it can come to the next town meeting, be it special or annual.
So, now you see why we enact policy, and we don't do articles ourselves, that's what we do. Town members, and we have attorneys to do that for us, so thank you.
Thank you. Did you have any follow-up on your...
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right, so moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
4-0. Thank you very much.
I need to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business? We have Katie.
Madam Chair, if I could.
Yeah?
Whichever you prefer, I think, right, Madam Chair?
Yeah, whichever you prefer. You want to sit or stand? It's up to you.
Sit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Katie. Would you just say your name for?
Yeah, I'm Katherine Klein, and I'm an attorney at KP Law in Boston.
Great. And then I'm just going to read it for item A is "Discussion on the Implications of the U.S. Supreme Court Decision in Tyler v. Hennepin County, Minnesota on Massachusetts Tax Title Foreclosures and Disposition of Tax Title Property, Including State Cases and Pending Legislation: Further Discussion on the Acquisition and the Disposition of Existing and Future Tax Title Properties." Votes may be taken. So, I will open it up to you, Katie, to give the overview.
Okay, so, in May of 2023, the United States Supreme Court decided a case called Tyler v. Hennepin County. It was a Minnesota case. And what it said was that if there is, if a town or city takes property by tax title and the taxes and costs and expenses are less than the value of the property, and the difference between those two values is called the surplus equity or the excess equity, the town or the city may not keep that equity. It is due to the former property owner. And as a result of that, there have been a number of cases in Massachusetts trying to determine what to do with that United States Supreme Court case vis-à-vis Massachusetts Tax Title Statute. And the legislature has also been looking at this issue. And I prepared a memorandum for the board's review, because I am aware that there are a number of tax title properties that the town owns and is thinking of acquiring, thinking of disposing of, considering retaining. And there are implications as a result of this case and the legislation. And, well, the Massachusetts cases and the pending legislation. And in the last, I wrote this memo in June of this year, and in the last, well, the budget has gone up to the governor. And in the budget, there is legislation. It hasn't been signed by the governor yet, and I think it went up on Thursday or Friday, that discusses this issue. And there was originally a House bill and a Senate bill, and they reconciled the two. And that, as I said, it's done in the context of the budget. And it sets forth a process which towns need to follow in the event towns would like to dispose of property or retain property for the town's municipal purposes. And I can go through that with you, the process a bit for you. And, but I do have to, you know, say that we don't know whether the governor will sign this. And I'm aware, just on my way down here today, I received an email saying that, you know, the Massachusetts Municipal Association has concerns about some aspects of the bill. They don't appear to be really things that can't be addressed, but there are concerns at that, you know, at that level. And the other thing that is in the legislation is the formation of a commission to report to the legislature on a number of issues. And clearly, the legislature is considering, well, will we revisit this issue? I just want to point out some of the things that the commission is charged with looking at. And that would be, they're looking at the local property tax collection processes throughout the Commonwealth. They are looking at recommended statutory interest rate changes for delinquent property taxes as opposed to tax, you know, property that is in tax title. An examination of the revenue impact on cities and towns of this legislation, which could be considerable or could be significant, as we all know. Recommended changes to the statute of limitations. And analyzing data regarding Tyler v. Hennepin and how it affects, you know, in other states. And they're looking for a, the commission to file a report by December 31st of 2025. So, we haven't heard the last of this. And that is where things stand right now. The legislation, one final thing is the legislation does say at this point, it does have a statute of limitations going back to May 24th of 2021. So, that's significant. So, if that continues, it means that if there was a foreclosure prior to that time, that that, that the excess equity maybe, that maybe the former owner can't, you know, isn't entitled to that.
Okay. So, anything following that date?
Right, right. And going forward, of course.
Right. So, I guess just, well, I'll open it to board members before I go to my questions. Michael, do you have any?
Just, did I miss an email? You're reading off of something. I have no material in the packet on this.
Was my memorandum not distributed?
I don't see it in the packet.
We didn't get it, no?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
If I could add, however, there's a stale datedness to that in that Katie and I were talking about the legislative changes. The material that I had had a retroactive date of May of 2023. So, what I can get to the board is Katie's information relative to what is believed to be on the governor's desk? Is that what you're understanding?
Yeah, I received that today.
Yeah.
So, I didn't want to confuse the issue more, but I, I'm sorry, you didn't have my memo. I thought that, I'm sorry, presented as if you did.
Yeah, no, we didn't.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Did you have a follow-up, Michael?
Yeah, thank you for that, Katie. And I would look forward to that. I'd also look forward to getting a copy from administration or yourself on the bill itself that is sitting on the desk. But all of the information pertaining to this conversation. Equity to the former property owner, I get in most foreclosures. So, if we get a non-taxpaying person and we foreclose on their property, we shouldn't get to keep the difference. I totally get it. One of our problems in this town is owners unknown. And more importantly, and I think that that needs to be part of the conversation through the lawyers, through the governor's office, through whomever, because we're stuck in a situation now where we have $3 million worth of owners unknown, penalties, interest accruing, and our tax records are a mess. Not all these properties, in my opinion, and through a little bit of homework, are owners unknown. They've just kept them to themselves for now until they want to do something with them. So, there has to be a mechanism for us to flush that out or work towards the law for people that are holding these pocket deeds and not doing anything with them at a detriment to the town. We, we have to clean up this property mess. And what happens in a situation where the town buys a big piece of land and then, and then through due diligence after the fact, a letter was changed in somebody's name, and one of the title researchers in town picks up on it and then starts going to the heirs and buying little pieces of it? And if we just continue to sit on this property or we take it by eminent domain and escrow the money for the difference, as you recommended on Seth Whitefield, and that gives them an indefinite amount of time, them being the title researchers, an indefinite amount of time to chase down heirs and buy pieces of this property. Can they then go to land court with whatever they buy and present their case? And in that case, what does the town get and what do they get? And I'll put all this in writing to you if you want. But I have a lot of questions, and not based on foreclosures of properties of owners known, but it's owners unknown.
I agree that it's problematic. I mean, one, I think I also included in my materials an analysis of Chapter 200A, which is, there is a process for towns to give. Well, I mean, the problem is if you don't know who to give notice to. I mean, that's what you're saying. And I agree that it's a problem. And if, I mean, the only answer I can give is to say if the town has done its due diligence and can show that and, you know, determines to hold the property, and someone comes up 20 years later and says, "I'm the owner," I think the burden is on them to show, you know, that they could have come forward earlier, and they should have come forward earlier. I'm not saying that a court would necessarily agree with that assessment, but, and I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but the burden should be on the person coming forward if the town has, you know, acted in good faith and with reasonable due diligence.
Thank you. Madam Chair, one last question.
Sure, go ahead.
And I will put in writing to the chair my questions after I read through all the documentation that you provided earlier. What is the start date on this? So, for instance, we've already worked on properties, and we've already, we've got other properties that we've been waiting on called land at low value that our past tax collector got permission from the state, and we went through all of the due diligence. In your opinion, do we have to hold on that? Or can we move forward on that? Because it was decided before the Supreme Court came up with this decision.
The start date in the budget amendment that I've been discussing is, it's November, late in November of 2024.
Okay.
So, I know that the, as I said, the Massachusetts Municipal Association would like to see that date later than that to give time for comment on it and to deal with some of the, you know, bugs that they see in the legislation. But that's currently the date. But I think, I think the town needs to assume that in spite of, I think Tyler v. Hennepin is good law in this state and will govern, regardless of the fact that Massachusetts doesn't have, currently have legislation. So, I think, I think at this point, there are three, there are a few situations. One is a situation where we know the taxes exceed the market value of the property. And I think in that case, you're fine. The situation in which it doesn't, I mean, if the taxes are less than, I do think until this gets wrapped up a little bit more, it's safest to hold on to the excess equity for right now. I think it'll be a question of either a couple, a few months or probably not more than six months to eight months until this is, until the legislation goes into effect and we know exactly what should be done.
Thank you. And that really falls into the land at low value stuff, and maybe you'll have to look at that. We've exhausted conversation on this. These are micro parcels of land that nobody can do anything with.
Yeah.
So, I, for one board member, are not concerned about it. And the homework was done through the tax collector, and this process was approved, I think, two years ago? Maybe, maybe longer than that. So, I'm interested in moving that project along.
Yeah, I mean, there are two things to say about land of low value. One, the taxes may very well exceed the value. And two, this legislation doesn't mention land of low value, which I think is interesting. And also, the statute's a bit different in land of low value than it is in tax title foreclosures through the land court in that there is a mechanism within the statute itself for prior owners to obtain the excess equity, whereas there is not currently a mechanism in the tax title foreclosure situation for, you know, the excess equity to be returned to the property owner. So, at this point, I'd say you're safer on land of low value than foreclosed, land that's been foreclosed.
That's been foreclosed, okay. Michael, are you set?
I'm good, thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you, Katie. Thanks for being here. Just a couple of questions. Is there a finite amount of time that penalties and taxes can accrue on a delinquent property? I've been heard, I've been told that it's X number of years, and then penalties and it does not accrue. Is that?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Excellent, thank you. With respect to properties that are taken and sold, I think it makes good sense that the excess equity goes back to the owners. What, is there any language, or, and it's probably in your memo, but any language or provision for taking a piece of property and then selling it 10 years later?
Well, it's, selling it 10 years later, this would...
Take a property, hold the property, sell the property, dispose of the property years later.
This legislation would not allow that to happen.
Would not allow it.
Would not allow you, the town, to hold on to it for that period of time, because there's a, there are timeframes. And the way it's set up, it's kind of, it's kind of peculiar. But within 14 days of the foreclosure by the, of the judgment from the land court, which is an insane amount of time, because towns can't act that quickly. Within 14 days, the town is supposed to decide whether it wants to keep the property or to dispose of the property. And if it wants to dispose of the property, it has one year, it has to list the property with a real estate broker or agent. And that real estate broker or agent sells the property, has the listing say for a year. If it's not sold within that year, the town has a period of time in which to auction the property with an auctioneer. So, the way the legislation is written, property, towns can't hold on to it. I mean, can't sit on these properties for, you know, the length of time that has historically happened.
So, this sounds like they're working off like the 1031 tax exchange model, where you have to name a property and dispose of it?
Well, within that...
Within a timeframe.
Years or something, I think that's, yeah. I mean, it's going to accelerate everything. It's going to, it's going to be a terrible burden. I don't mean a terrible burden. It is going to be an administrative burden for towns. Just because, I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just saying it's a lot of work.
And for the excess equity, is that interest-bearing?
Oh, with, no.
No.
No, they wouldn't, no, they wouldn't earn interest on the, I mean, I think if you...
Meaning if it was way back?
Well...
The statute forward two years?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
If that's not addressed in the legislation.
Yes.
Pete?
Any discussion or written language related to penalties and fees at all?
Yes. Well, in a couple contexts. It would reduce the statutory interest rate from, I think, 16 to 8%. And in terms of, is that your, one of your questions?
Yeah, along that line, right.
Okay. And in terms of what constitutes expenses and costs, is that-
Yep.
-where you were going?
Yep.
Yeah. It does list, I mean, towns would be able to add on to the taxes plus the interest, all the costs that they have incurred, costs and expenses. For instance, if there's a realis, I mean, a real estate agent selling the property, their commission, of course, would, that wouldn't have to be paid to the, the property owner. If, if, what, what they're recommending, not recommending, what the legislation says at this point in terms of property, that if the town wants to retain a piece of property for municipal purposes, an appraisal has to be done. And the cost of the appraisal would be, you know, deductible as well. You know, the town could, would be paid for that. So, basically, anything you can show that's a cost or expense that you, that town has incurred, would, the town would not have to be paid over to the former owner.
Okay.
So, on that note, if you were, if the town were to decide to, that there was a piece that they wanted to retain, and they go through that process of having an appraisal, et cetera, and then let's just say 20 years passes, and the town decides, "Oh, we want to sell that."
Mm-hmm.
They will not be able to sell it because they didn't sell it within the 12-month period?
I don't think that's the case.
Yeah.
I don't think that that would be the case.
Have to see how this flushes out, though.
That, that wouldn't, that would be, that would be, wouldn't make sense to me.
Yeah. So then why, why are they imposing that within the 12 months? Do you think, is, is this an idea of not allowing towns to sort of amass lands if they-
Well, I think, I don't know what motivated the legislature. I think they probably want to see-
I'm upset.
They want to see, they want to see this, these properties advanced. And they also, the, the longer the property's held, the harder, the more difficult it will be to put together an account, well, to appraise, know the value of what it was, you know, 20 years before, what costs and expenses the town has incurred. So, I think that those two reasons, you know, might be the rationale. But I, I don't, I don't think that a town is committed to holding a piece of property forever once they've elected to retain it.
Okay.
I, I don't see that happening.
Don't see that. And that's good. I think the, to Michael's point on the owners unknown, and, and I understand why there are owners unknown, but then there's the other rationale that people know it, they're just not, you know, recording that land. And is there any way or any other kind of legislation that towns could look to, to the legislature to draft to say, "Well, in these scenarios, we don't believe this is truly unknown. So, how do you protect towns from not being able to collect the taxes when notifications go out and suddenly people suddenly remember that they own the land?" You know?
Sure I can answer that?
Yeah, right? It's kind of, I'm-
It, it is very difficult, and, and obviously, I know it's a significant issue here and elsewhere, and, but it seems to be more significant on the Cape than in other places that I work.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Joe?
If I may, Madam Chair, through you, three things that I want to bear out. First is, in talking with council several weeks ago about projects and other things going on, it became clear to me that there was a chilling effect that may be going on here. So, I appreciate Kay being here tonight. And again, I've been at MMA the last two months where we've talked about it as an association. There hadn't been a lot of agreement on, you know, what our concerns are. So I'll definitely look into the notice that we probably got this afternoon or this evening.
This was, sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry. It, it was an internal memorandum among lawyers, but I'm certainly, I'm happy to share-
So I haven't missed anything yet from MMA?
I'm happy to share with you.
All right, thank you. And then the second point would be, I just want to put it out there, administrative burdens are terrible burdens, if you're administration. And so that is the concern about this. But my, my third point is more of a question. Katie, is it fair to say that what Tyler got to and the Massachusetts legislative effort is land regarding foreclosures and tax takings, so-called, correct?
Correct.
So, later on this evening, you have three properties that we're going to talk about the value to dispose of. The town, in two instances, two of the properties that we're going to talk about later on, were two of several properties listed by the town. I think the takings were contemplated by town meeting in 1995 for two of them, and 1996 for the third one. Is it your understanding and/or hope that, that retroactive date exempts them?
It's certainly my hope, for the sake of towns and the financial burden and the administrative burden. And the statute of limitations that I referenced earlier would, would address that, in my opinion. So, I, I know you're talking about the Queen Anne Road parcels.
Correct, yep.
And I know that we're talking at least 20 years for each of them.
Right.
And it, it is, it is not my understanding that the current, the legislation as proposed would, would, would require the town to look at, re- relook at those at this point.
Maybe an unfair question, but is that to say that the proposed action later on tonight can occur on those because they may be safe?
And the proposed action is to-
To determine, I think, a, a minimum bid level-
Right, oh, to dispose of them, right.
And to put them out for bid, yeah.
Yes, I think, I think it can, I think that action can go forward. The worst-case scenario, obviously, is if, I, I think the town should hold on to the proceeds at this point.
Okay.
I think that's the safest thing to do for now. And I think we'll have answers sooner rather than later. And in terms of establishing, you know, a minimum bid, that's certainly fine.
We can move forward on that, yeah, okay, great. Thank you. Anybody else have any other follow-up questions for Katie? Yep, Michael?
Reserve my right to bring them back, because I want to read the documentation.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, well, I think we should bring it back anyway, because we didn't have the documentation, so.
And we're hoping to have some answer if the legislation that's before the governor is adopted. That'll give us, you know, much greater clarity, or any other action. And I would expect that our association, MMA, will have some discussions on that as well. So, hopefully more to come on this chilling concept.
And thank you, Katie, for being here in person.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
It's, it's much easier, quite frankly.
Thanks again. Have a good night.
You too.
Next item, B. On under our new business, get a motion?
Madam Chair, if I could just state for the record that the matter that you're about to deal with is one that I understand is in your packet, but I have not familiarized myself with the particulars of the case in any way, shape, or form, in case the board directs me to conduct a hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody, so the discussion and vote to appoint the town administrator as a hearing officer, and to conduct a public hearing for alleged legal license violations. That occurred on July 6th at the Port Restaurant and Bar Incorporated, 541 Route 28.
So moved.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Who was the second?
Jeff. I said it.
Oh, you, you were the most-
I moved it.
Then I was the second.
Oh, all right, thank you, sorry.
Thank you.
Number two.
He just needed to know who to thank. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four, zero.
Sorry, Madam-
Then, Madam Chair, if I could, I'll work with the police department and council to begin that process.
Thank you. Item C, get a motion?
I move that we approve a special permit application for a one-day entertainment and one-day wines and malt permit for reciprocity artisan market. Event to be held September 7th, 2024, 4:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Outside at 4 Cross Street. Entertainment will include live recorded music, amplification, dancing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve a special permit application for a one-day wines and malt permit for Nicole Pratt. Event to be held at Cape Life Brand Company, 537 Main Street, on August 4th, 2024, from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four, zero.
Pete, I'm gonna let you do the rest of the questions.
Not a problem, it's gonna be as printed.
There you go.
Item E, vote to approve the Democratic Town Committee list of election workers as printed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Four, zero.
Vote to approve the Republican Town Committee list of election workers as printed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All, oh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Four, zero.
Just thank you to all of them for participating.
Yes. And now, item G, Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you to the board. So my understanding is this matter is coming before you, so that the town can, I think, set standards for minimum bid amounts for the three properties identified in your agenda, 172 Queen Anne Road, 178 Queen Anne Road, and 246 Queen Anne Road. And I can go over the, the process under Chapter 30B if you'd like. Generally speaking, if you're relying upon the last similar-type property, which of course is bigger than these properties in question, the minimum bid for that one was $950,000, and the successful bid came in at one, over 1.5 million. The only other thing I would ask the board to take a moment to perhaps discuss is, the first two parcels, 172 Queen Anne and 178 Queen Anne, are contiguous. They are separate. They are presently non-conforming. And I did pose the question to staff if the town wanted to combine the two properties, which would then make it buildable under our zoning bylaws. What would it take? The question was generally, it would be an approval not required, but staff wasn't exactly clear if the town were to initiate that transaction, if that was the same requirement. So I just wanted to put that out there, that we could present all three parcels independently, or if you wanted to consider merging the two parcels at 172, 178.
So I have a real sticky question, and there's a wonderful person, there's a wonderful person in the audience who might be able to answer. But since it's the town's property, could we do an 81X to just, no, go through the A and I for the more official process? Yeah, okay.
That was the actual question I asked. I, I said 91X, but I did say X. But staff had indicated that's a question better suited for our land use attorney.
Yeah.
Andy Questle. Regardless, doesn't do anything to stop your conversation tonight about potential minimum bid amounts for the, for the invitation for bids.
Thank you, Joe. Do you want to stop? I'm looking at you.
Just real quick, Joe, are you saying that 40 and 41 are not buildable?
So, 40 and 41 are not, they're non-conforming presently.
Okay.
They are zoned for industrial, but they do not meet the minimum requirements. One of them by itself does not meet the frontage. One of them does. So if you combine them, there's no question on conformity, and there's no question on frontage.
All right. Coming into this, I did a fair amount of homework, and Article 40, which is a smaller lot, K-13, and Article 41, K-14. Article 40, my research puts it at about 375,000, minimum in my mind. And there is a comp for that on Main Street Extension, and then K-1-4, 400,000. I'd be happy selling them together or independently, personally. And I do think on one of them, or combined, we should sell it with the rights that we would have an easement on one side of the property. All we'd need is a small utility easement, but per our discussions about possibly running a pipe under the highway for affluent discharge on the other side of the highway, that was two of the lots that were contemplated. But I'm hearing a 10-foot easement is all we would have to ask for, and they couldn't build on that portion of the property anyway. And then Article 42, which was the larger of the lots, 800,000, would be where I would think the minimum on that is, based on the size of the last lot that we sold, and keeping in mind that that one was also pre-cleared for the person that built there.
Yeah. And I would also just point out that these are the last three of the town's property, so I think that-
Well, not exactly. But we'll get into that another time.
Technically, for, for now.
Madam Chair, Richard Wastek, Howard Report. I would suggest that you combine the properties, because you don't want to get into a bid process where people are trying to do contingent bids. And if you don't know for certain that it is buildable, if you've got to get a special permit to do it on two separate lots, normally the sum of the parts is greater than the sum of the whole. But in this particular case, you may want those combined to get the most money out of that particular parcel. So I would recommend talking to your land use attorneys and, and finding out how, the easiest way to combine that so it is buildable. That way you can attract the people and the larger bidder pool to that process. And you want to get as many bidders in there as you can.
That makes sense, yeah. Joe?
If I could, just following on that, and I appreciate the commentary. Staff believes that if the town were to initiate that process, the most difficult would simply be site plan showing the lots together and filing through the board. You could direct me to do it as your custodian of lands, an approval not required plan.
All right.
So that's probably the most difficult we'd have to go through, unless council says there's a quicker way to do it.
And would we go to VHB to get a site plan at this point?
We, we could. I mean, the site plan's pretty straightforward.
Right. And the backlog with engineers is probably better to... Michael?
I would move that we combine them and put the minimum at 775.
Right. I'd second that.
Moved and seconded. Pete, did you, oh, did you have any discussion item on that?
No, no, I'm good. Could I take it that the motion was to set the two minimums at 775 for 40 and 41, and 800 for 42?
That was the motion.
That's what I thought, thank you.
That was my second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Four, zero.
Thank you.
Just follow up, if I may, Madam Chair.
Sure.
To the town administrator, what do we think time-wise?
So I was looking at 276 Queen Anne, so that one was actually done a year ago, a week ago. I think we had bids coming in at the end of August. What I would like to recommend is that I get the IFB back to you, hopefully August 5th, but with a response time just after Labor Day. There's a whole host of reasons for that, but I think that's similar to the last cycle we went through.
So, thank you for that. The time then, on when it gets advertised, that's really what I'm looking for.
So I can draft a schedule, send it to the board, blind copy, generally speaking. We released the IFB for 276, I believe, in the middle of July. We had the question-and-answer period, August 22nd, and we had the bids due August 29th.
Okay.
So I think you're talking roughly five, six weeks perhaps, on the overall process.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Now we have a discussion on the request from St. Peter's Lutheran Church, 310, Route 137, for reimbursement for the purchase of a grinder pump. And we wanted to have, thank you for coming. Sure, wherever you're comfortable, and just identify yourself.
Sure. My name is Rich Archambeau. I'm the chairperson, property chairperson of St. Peter's Lutheran Church. First, I should thank all of you for the opportunity to make this presentation to lend some context and detail to our request, so that it makes a little more sense. I have about a four-minute presentation. I'll try to compress it as much as I can. St. Peter's Lutheran Church is located at Route 137, on Route 137, very close to the intersection of Route 6. Part of the building, as you see when you drive, is on your left-hand side. Most of the building is at street level, but part of the building is below street level. That's kind of important with the design changes that occurred. In October of 2019, St. Peter's Lutheran Church was notified of the Phase 2 sewer line installation and our resultant obligation to abandon our septic system and connect to the sewer when completed. We immediately engaged the services of coastal engineering to develop a 90% construction plan to enable connection to the sewer. This was complete, completed in November 2019. In February 2022, we received from the town of Harwich, a notice to connect with the deadline of February 4, 2024. Just prior to the receipt of this letter, of course, the sewer line in front of St. Peter's was finished. We are the last property on that line. In July 2022, we learned of a design change whereby the sewer line along Route 137, at least at the area in which the church is located, was installed not 30 feet below the road's surface, but instead it was installed 20 feet below the road's surface. surface, but instead it was installed 20 feet below the road's surface. I believe the design change was made to save a sufficient amount of money. It is important to note that our sewage discharge is well below the street level. The design change required the inclusion of a grinder pump in order to successfully discharge the effluent up to and into the main sewer line. We were advised that the town of Harwich made the decision to provide grinder pumps at no additional charge to those properties affected by the sewer line design change. Our responsibility would be to pay for the installation and the maintenance of the grinder pump, I'm sorry. Our responsibility, with this knowledge, we decided to wait for the pumps to be procured by the town, and once received, we would engage an authorized company to start and complete the connection to the main sewer line. Between July 2022 and January 2024, I asked for and received several updates from Dan Pelletier, who's your former superintendent of water and wastewater.
Right.
We talked about the town's progress of the grinder pumps. As I learned, the progress of pumps procurement is dependent on strict adherence to proper design and bidding procedures and appropriate funding. On January 4, 2024, I received the following message from Dan. He said regarding the grinder pump procurement, "I had a meeting with the finance department and town's bond advisors before Christmas to review borrowing for the grinder units. In short, the town is in the process of obtaining slash submitting the required legal documents necessary to borrow the money for this and other projects. The finance director advised this week she did not anticipate that the town will be in a position to borrow money until June of 2024," which pushes out when we can bid." So for us, and we understand that, we really do, we're just trying to comply with the directive that was put into us. But it seemed like maybe it was going to be, the delay was going to snowball even further. So we decided, after receipt of this message, we made the decision to proceed with the complete installation, including a grinder pump purchased by our contractor as soon as possible. The basis of this decision was our concern that the installation, material, and labor costs associated with the project would continue to increase with time and negate the benefit of the town-supplied grinder pump. In conclusion, our decision to proceed with the sewer installation was made with the hope that the town of Harwich would reimburse St. Peter's for the grinder pump, which would be the cost of the pump plus the freight to get it to the onsite. We paid $10,830. It seems logical that when the town of Harwich completes the bidding process, that you would be buying multiple units of the grinder pump, and you would generate a final selling price much lower than that. If you do, that's fine. We don't expect to be reimbursed $10,830 if you buy the pumps for $8,000. We would then just be quite happy if you reimbursed us the $8,000. If for some reason Harwich negotiated a price greater than $10,830, maybe two years down the road or whenever, we agree that our reimbursement of $10,830 is appropriate. To date, we've spent $45,000 on this project. I can, I'm sure you can understand that in a church environment, that's a lot of money. But we were, we understand the reason for it. It's valid, and we were happy to do it. We did, we did seek bids from four contractors initially in December 2022. We didn't act on that, and then we asked two companies to give us an increase, rebid the process about a year later, and one company came in about 50% more. I don't really know why. I probably could have sought, you know, more detailed information, and then one came in about 16% more. So the pandemic, of course, created a great deal of havoc in the supply chain just about everywhere in the world. We just felt if we delayed it any further, that we would begin to edge away at the generosity of the town to offer the grinder pumps. That's the context, and that's the detail of our question.
Thank you, thank you for going over it in detail. It's important for, you know, the public at large to understand why you're here and what the ask is. So I'm going to open it up to board members in terms of any questions, unless, Joe, did you have something?
I have much more than I can add, if the board appreciates.
Yeah.
First, thank you for your presentation and your patience. Madam Chair, as you and the board members know, I meet weekly with representatives from GHD, our wastewater engineer. They had made me aware of this after they had been made aware of it from our former water wastewater superintendent. And so everything that has been presented and articulated is more than reasonable and fair. The matter that stands before the town now is we have not been able to locate a vote of the board by way of policy. So I'm already working with GHD, and will be working with council to establish a policy on grinder pumps and the distribution of the same. We do now have the funding in question that was provided to the town in late June, and that has been confirmed. Generally speaking, we believe we have, or we do not have enough funding presently for the 20-plus properties that need to have grinder pumps. However, it's more than enough for the town to reimburse the Lutheran Church, because they've already done that. Generally speaking, GHD thinks that you'd be in the ballpark. We would imagine between synergies and cost savings and all that, that our costs might be lower, but the unit and the dollar amount that they're working from is not excessive. So the town needs to do a policy. We have to establish a transfer and agreement, and we have to do the procurement. Of those three, the one that worries me the most would not impact this conversation with St. Peter's, and that is the procurement process. What that I could do for consultants with an email would be fantastic. This is considered an accoutrement or an extension of construction, so we don't believe it's going to be as simple as a chapter 30B procurement. It's a little bit more involved. Regardless, in talking with GHD and in preparation to talk to council, I could recommend, and I believe I'm hewing to your policy on policies properly, that there could be a first reading or a draft presented on August 5th. You could do either your first or second reading August 19th. The only hesitation I have is I know there's some element of public notice similar to a public hearing, so the 14-day rule. In any event, I don't see any reason why the board and the town could have, wouldn't have a grinder pump policy on purchase, acquisition, transfer to other parties by the middle of September. I will update that as I have the conversations with council. So in this instance, we have the money. Certainly, if the board votes to do the reimbursement up to a certain dollar amount, we can do that, and the Lutheran Church would be our first test case, so to speak, with the transfer document, per se. But everything that's been presented tonight is fair and reasonable, and now that we have the money available, it becomes that much easier to accomplish.
Great, thank you, Joe. And just to give some background, you know, the letter came in, and Noreen Donahue is coming up to speak as well, but I thought it was important for us to have this conversation because I don't think you were on the board at all at that point of sewer discussions, and you weren't on at the time, but Michael and I were on, and we talked about grinder pumps and the fact that it wasn't fair to impose that additional charge to those people who had to have grinder pumps. So I'm not surprised that you, I don't recall finalizing a policy, but I know we talked at great length about the fact that we felt that that was the way we were going to go. So I'll just go to Noreen.
Madam Chair, Board, Town Administrator, Rich, nice to meet you. Noreen, Noreen Donahue, Chair of the Water Wastewater Commission. So I just wanted to give you some background on the Phase 2 needs, and this is information coming from the Chair, so as you know, everything needs to be checked in the field. You were very prompt at getting that on the agenda, so didn't quite get all the legwork done. But at any rate, I did just hear the town administrator say approximately a number of 20. I'm not sure which phase he was referring to, but I'd like to give some background on Phase 2. Again, quick numbers, but to the best of my knowledge, there are seven installed now, and that includes the St. Peter's location. And there's a potential for six more. Again, these are Bay Road and places where the contracts were changed, so all of this has to be checked. So I would want you to keep that in mind, that there are six other locations out there that we haven't heard from, but that nevertheless did acquire grinder pumps and go ahead with them. As to the vote you mentioned, I actually went back and watched your meeting of October 3, 2022, and there was a lengthy discussion. I can actually give you the time on the tape.
Oh, great.
And I'm not sure if I have that right here, but at any rate, there was a 10-minute discussion, and it came up during the presentation on low-pressure systems to do with the sewer pipe in West Harwich. And at that time, Dan and the representatives from GHD showed that it was an enormous savings to not try to do it all by gravity. And, you know, I wish, you know, you can't tell engineers what to do, but I wish on his charts they had written "construction" and then "grinder pumps." They did not. They always include the grinder pumps in with the construction line. But at any rate, it was clearly demonstrated to you folks that it saved like 50% on the line of that project. So at that point, you folks had a 10-minute discussion, said pretty much case closed, that's a no-brainer, because Dan and GHD at the time needed the wherewithal to go ahead and either go the gravity route or the low-pressure route. Unfortunately, when the motion was made by our friend Larry Ballantyne, it was not crystal clear, and it relayed more to the low-pressure part than to the grinder pump part, but it's in there, you know? I would suggest either you revoke or examine that. I'm happy to send you the actual...
That'd be great, yeah.
...tape part. So, okay, so that's the background, is I just wanted to make you aware that we do have the other six already installed and potentially six more. I'm not sure about the others, there were four others that never got ordered to connect things. I think they were deleted neighborhoods. As I say, all of this has to be verified in the field. And the only other question, back from the work when we were talking about this policy for years, it might sound silly, but I mean, is it legal to do this? I mean, we reimburse people for damages when the town does it, but, you know, eventually I was just hoping the policy obviously would get double-checked with KP, you know, just to...
Joe, go ahead.
To that last point, it is legal in the manner that I've described, meaning policy by the board and some sort of agreement that transfers the item in question. GHD representatives and I are working on two Cape Cod-based communities who are not represented by KP law.
Ah.
So we're working on their work and then having KP law confirm it. But to the question of legality, this is something the town can do. And like I say, even though you've got several meetings to adopt a policy, the most critical part is going to be the acquisition through procurement. And then lastly, if I could, to Noreen, we were thinking Phase 2. GHD was thinking around 20, so it sounds like the numbers are close, but if we have four or less, that's even better.
That's right.
You know, we're dealing with about $149,000, so when you do the math, we're just getting right there, so we might have enough, if that's the true number. However, that only covers Phase 2.
Right.
So obviously, for Phase 3, and it should be accounted for in some of the construction money anyway...
It is.
...we'll be able to account for that.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
I believe it was mentioned on the bid documents, although I couldn't find it, when we went out for bid on Contract 1 and Contract 2 of Phase 3, it was mentioned at the time that a portion of money was held back because the grinder pump purchase for Phase 3, where there would be significantly more locations, since we were doing it that way and saving an enormous amount of money by having the pipe not as deep as before. So money has been held back, I couldn't tell you how much, but...
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Andy, do you have any comments?
I'll send you that. Who should I send that time on the...
So if I, we have the minutes of the meeting. We didn't have the video, but we still have the same result.
Yeah.
It was inconclusive on the policy, so you can certainly send that to me, but I would still recommend policy and transfer document from the board.
Yeah, right, okay.
Thank you.
I'll send that to you, though.
Thank you, Noreen.
And Madam Chair, to your point, I do remember having the conversations about grinder pumps. We never did come to a decision in my mind. We talked about a future policy.
Right.
The hats off, hats off to Joe. I've never heard of a municipal bid coming in cheaper than a public bid, but I might hold you to that.
So it's going to be based on quantity and where we can buy them from?
My statement remains the same.
Challenge accepted.
Quantity would just be time, price times 20.
Challenge accepted.
And then the only other question I had was, I mean, GH, it wasn't GHD that designed the system. They took over for CDM Smith, and then they got into the gravity part of this versus not. And then, question to you.
Yes, sir.
Your engineering was done based on what you had been told on that 30-foot depth? Had you already done your engineering?
Yeah, that was, most of that engineering, that 90% engineering, had to do with getting it out of the building. I don't remember if it's, the grinder pump was part of that, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I mean, I have the plans right here, I can look, legit, I can answer that in a moment.
Yeah.
In fact, I'll sit over there and give you that answer.
No, don't worry about it. You can get it to the Chair, to the town administrator, that would be fine. And it really is irrelevant. Your ask is very reasonable, and really it is policy-driven. I couldn't make a decision tonight if I wanted to, because I'm not setting a precedent before we look at a policy that makes sense and some numbers that make sense. But your request is very reasonable, and thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Michael. Jeff?
I echo Michael's sentiments. I think your pitch was very reasonable. Personally, I would view you as patient number one, if I had to, but I definitely would like to see the policy.
At my age, I'm not sure patient is a word I want to use.
I would like to see the policy and put some numbers to it.
And I agree, I agree.
Thank you.
We'll be patient.
Pete?
No, I echo those comments, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you for coming in.
Maybe sometime in September or thereafter?
Yeah, yeah, we should have something.
I'll keep you posted.
Okay, great, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, where are we?
Old Business.
Oh, Old Business, yeah, item A. Michael McMillan?
You, Michael.
Lottamoy Regional Schools, just capital planning. Good evening.
Good evening, Slapboards.
How are you?
Good. Is the TV working?
I don't know, why is it?
It was beautiful.
It was very nice, yeah.
Do we have the TV working?
It wasn't working.
Oh.
Jamie bought some new equipment for it.
Thank you. Excellent.
Thank you.
It looks very nice.
It does look nice.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
So during our, I'm Michael McMillan, I'm the School Business Manager.
Scott Gardner, Superintendent, Lottamoy Regional.
And we're here mostly to prove that we still keep working over the summer.
I was going to just say, house vacation.
So during the budget process this year, there was kind of comment made that you would like to hear more about our capital planning process, and we're kind of in the middle, or just about to start, our new capital planning process for the FY '26 budget, but so this, I thought would just give you a little context for that. And it might be, this is the first, we might come back once we have more meat on the bones, but this will give you an idea of how we put our capital plan together, and what we see is some of the big-ticket items are coming up over the next few years, next five to 10 years. So this is our process that we have. We carry out needs assessment during, and this is what we're just about to start, is our kind of annual needs assessment, where we'll walk the buildings. We then prioritize those needs, and then we start to identify where the funding is going to come from, and we get local approval, and then we actually implement the, you know, the projects for that year. Wait for it. There we go. It's worth waiting for. So basically, I'm just going to talk over the next few slides, sort of on the, how we identify the needs and how we prioritize them, and then really when we come back to you during the budget processes, and we talk about what, how, and which to fund, and then we proceed to local approval to move forward with these, those projects.
Caleb, where's the best place to aim to add these slides?
Oh, there you go.
Thanks, Caleb.
So this is, I'll go quickly, but you know, one issue for us is what is capital? Because we have one definition from the town of Harwich, we have a slightly different one for the town of Chatham. The state has a different version, so when we report our expenditure to the state, that's a slightly different definition. And then we also have extraordinary maintenance, which is kind of source... And then we also have extraordinary maintenance, which is kind of sort of falls just short of capital investment under those definitions. And there's some overlap of all of these. I mean, really, what we include in our capital plan is really any significant purchase which is going to have, make an impact on our budget. You know, that's where we start. That's how we develop that list, where it's gonna, especially if it's long-term impact on the building or infrastructure, and it's really going to make an impact on the budget that we present to you. Now, whether or not we actually call it capital in front of you depends on your definitions, but we kind of cast quite a wide net because we want to make sure we're capturing all of the needs and sort of properly identifying those and having a plan for, you know, addressing those needs. So each year, the first step of the process is that we do a review of the condition of each building. So I walk the building with the head custodian and our director of facilities, and the principal joins us, and we go kind of from the boiler room to the roof. We look at the condition of the building, and, you know, we just kind of look through every part of the building. We also review the work orders from the previous year to see if there's any kind of recurring issues. And we also, we have a couple of vendors we use on-call, so we get information from them as well about, you know, needs that they've identified, like with their HVAC systems and so on. Review inventory, and I'll come on to that, and we, and then we use this to produce an internal report that we use, which is really just a summary of the condition of that building. And we identify, and as we do that, we, you know, we identify any needs that we see where there's a, an item or a project that we think that would rise to the level of capital. There we go. So this is really key for me. So this slide, this table, I find very helpful. So we have all our major building components and their current age, and really, that really drives our expectations of when we need to, I think we'll need to replace a lot of these items. So what I've included there, you know, they're expected, so we basically have the item, so boilers, generators, and so on, all the way down here. Their expected useful life, and then the current age by buildings. So this is Chatham Elementary School, Harwich Elementary School, the middle school, and the high school. So you can see that the high school, they're all, you know, this high school's only 11, 12 years old, so a lot of these items are well within their useful life. But then, as you look at, you know, so if we take boilers, we have a boiler that's 27 years old, or boilers that are 27 years old at Chatham. One at Harwich is 21 years old, two that are 33 years old, and one is 20, or two or three that are 27 years old at the middle school. So that's our kind of starting point for trying to assess whether or not those are ready to be repaired, and then we also get those maintained on an annual basis. So we talk to the company that's maintaining them to make sure they're in good working order. And so they, I mean, so that, you know, boilers are a good example, although they are well within the kind of realm where you'd start to replacing them. They're working well. We're getting them maintained every year. They're still, I mean, their efficiency is probably down, but they're not, they're not breaking down on us at the moment, and so we've kind of not prioritized replacing them yet, but they are going to come up over the next few years.
Madam Chair?
I was just gonna ask, yeah, go ahead.
Can I just ask that we get this slide sent to us? Ours is cut off in the packet, so none of that-
No, we have that.
I think it depends what you pull it up on.
Yeah, I have the whole thing.
I'll get it from Jeff.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll send it over.
Thank you.
But on that, I just want to ask you, rather than go back to it, is, with those items, and I understand what you're saying, is, you know, they're working and you're maintaining them.
Yeah.
But is, and, so in terms of the different incentives, and I don't know if it's only residential, but I believe you have the commercial abilities too with MassSave-
Yeah.
-to look at those boilers and the incentives that you get for upgrading and they're more energy-efficient.
Yes.
Have you guys already looked at that?
We do look at some of those. I mean, yes, we look at those. There's also the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which provides a grant for replacing, and they historically provided a grant for replacing boilers, but they've put that in hold at the moment while they're investigating new technology to see how they want to move forward, you know, if they want to, you know, because they're talking about, you know, they're pushing heat pumps and different types of technology, so that's on hold at the moment. But yeah, we're always looking for different grants and available funds to offset these costs. And then if you go through the MSBA, they help you do that as well, so you can make sure you're maximizing your revenue. So, but you can see, and this is sort of the theme, and I think this is why you asked me to come back, was because, you know, we do, clearly, we've got a lot over the next five, 10 years. I mean, you don't want me to be sitting here telling you we've got a 37-year-old boiler, so, or if you do, you want to make sure you're looking, we're looking after it. So we do just envisage over the next few years that we're going to start to have to address some of these issues. And so once, so we go through, we review this, we walk the buildings, we talk to the people involved, and then, if you can just move to the next slide. Thank you. So yeah, so we, we then assess, I mean, this is really just a tool for us to have. So when we go through this process, we have a spreadsheet of like 200 items across the course of the district, which is on our capital plan. And we, in order to sort of prioritize this list, we have a formula where we assess the likelihood of failure, and that's we look at the age and the condition, and then if it does fail, what the impact will be on health and safety, the impact on school operations, the likely future costs, and the impact also just on the district vision, because, you know, what kind of building we want to have, and what kind of environmental, educational environment we want to have. And that produces a score, and that helps us prioritize them. We also estimate the cost of repairing or replacing the items, or we'll say it's incredibly difficult to estimate costs, especially if it's something you're going to be doing in five to 10 years' time. And, you know, we're all familiar with what construction costs have been like here on the Cape, so we pull a number, you know, based on our experience and talking to other school districts and what information is out there, but it's, I would bet my house on it, because especially if you wait a couple of years, it could have gone up significantly. But, you know, it helps us get a kind of broad-scale understanding of, you know, the size of the need. And I would say, and this is not an excuse, but, you know, this is an iterative process. So every year, we update this and we review it, and it gets a little better, and we get a little more accurate, and we get to understand a little more what's going on in the district. So this is when I come back a year later and it looks different. It's just because we've improved it, not because we messed up. And, you know, you learn, so like, we, you know, we think something's not a big deal, and then a year in of it not quite functioning fully, we realize, oh, that's impacting education or impacting the classrooms, and so that moves it up on our priority list. So these are kind of the big-ticket items we identified during the last budget process, and we are, you know, we are in the process, as I say, of updating all this, and we'll come back to you during the budget process with kind of updated list and a kind of five to 10-year plan if we're going to do all this. I know you're particularly interested in what's happening in Harwich, so we do have on there replacing the existing boilers in Harwich, and there was something else. Oh, we have some technology replacements that we need. Those are really the priorities in Harwich. I will say that Harwich Elementary School is in good condition right now for its age. I mean, if you've visited it recently, they've done a marvelous job of keeping it clean and well-maintained and keeping up with repairs, so we don't have a lot of needs there. I would say that most needs we have really are at the middle school. So we have, that's a big school, you know, it's, really needs a lot of maintenance, and one of the first things we started with, if you recall, is we're doing a project to replace the siding, so we've kind of started that project, and we'll hope to get the roof on there within the next few years. So there's a lot of work ongoing, middle school. And then at some point, we'll need to look at the football field and athletic track. That is something at the high school, which, you know, depending who you ask, you get a different expect, life expectancy. My athletic director says we should replace every 10 years. My facilities director says we can get like 15 years, so. And also, you know, just being near the coast with the sea air and everything, in theory, that causes the degradation to happen a lot faster. But we keep on top of these things. We're maintaining them all the time and hoping, you know, always hoping to get another year or two of useful life out of these components. And just, the other thing I just wanted to touch on, A, is, you know, our funding. So we're always looking, so this, what this chart is, is, and these are all really, well, I'll tell you what it is first. So basically, this is our expenditure on debt and capital improvements. So the kind of darker blue line here is our debt payments on the high school, and the lighter blue lines is kind of general capital projects, and these other blocks are different debt projects that we're kind of envisaging over the next few years. So we are, our plan is really as this, the debt payments on the high school goes down, that we kind of, we don't cut the budget, but that we keep maintaining our investment in our property and, you know, bringing on other projects. I mean, you know, cost of construction is so high, you know, when I tried to get for this presentation, you know, an estimate of how much you should be investing in your buildings to maintain them, but any and again, it's ludicrously high. So I think we're probably, because, you know, it's like, say, 2% of your cost of your buildings, but our buildings are, the cost of replacing the high school right now is like, I don't know, maybe $120 million, so 2% of that would just blow all our budgets out of the water. So we just know that we just need to maintain a certain level of investment to keep improving and keep replacing components over the next five to 10 years, keep on top of these projects, start to look at the, you know, I think the roofs and the boilers, those are the real main ones to make sure that we can kind of keep the schools open, heated, watertight. Those are our priorities, and we'll, you know, each year, we'll, I'll bring this back. I'll update this as we go into the next budget process and bring this back to you and provide you more detail on exactly how these numbers are looking for future budgets.
I'm just gonna interrupt you for one minute.
Just a quick question, if I could. On the last slide, and you don't have to go back.
Okay.
Install media equipment in the press box.
Yes.
That's the press box that CPC funded-
Yes.
-to be built?
Yep.
Okay.
And I would say with that, A, the media items, we're hoping to fund through the public access funds that we receive from the cable companies.
Okay.
So that is something you'll see before you.
Just wondering if we had a press box I didn't know about?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Only one. I can only handle one press box.
Know where it was.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then so, let me just jump to the next slide. Thank you. And so, yeah, this is my little icon. So yeah, so it's, you know, it's an ongoing process. It's not linear. It's a cycle. We just keep going through it, and I mean, we're always just trying to keep the buildings in good working condition and maintain a positive educational environment for the students. So that's the background.
Thank you. I'm gonna just see if any board members have any questions, but thank you for the presentation, and I do, I do recall the questioning that we went through last time you were here. So Pete, do you have any questions?
No, not really. You know, I think, Michael, you hit on it when you talked at the beginning, is how everybody has a different definition of capital, right? So, you know, I would clearly suspect that some of these things you folks keep within your, your annual budget.
Yeah.
You know, you clearly can't rely on the communities to come together to replace your switches at a moment's notice, so.
Absolutely.
Things like that is, so you're confirming. That's kind of how you operate.
And so when you go back, you know, that previous slide with the blue, sorry, can we go back to slides? So the light blue line, that's our capital, and honestly, you don't really, I mean, you see it when we present it, but it's just-
It's in the budget.
It's kind of a certain amount. It's in the budget every year, and we'll tell you what is going into it this year, but it doesn't normally impact, you know, the decision-making process. It doesn't require debt.
Right.
So yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Jeff?
Well, thanks for doing this. It certainly was helpful for me to look this over. I think it just solidifies my belief that we, as a board, need to get with the Chatham side and have a conversation. This is about a $15 million list right here, and I'm sure it's going to climb over the next five years. And a lot of it's infrastructure.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't, although it is directly related to servicing our kids in the school system by providing a very top-notch physical plant in a place that they're safe and they can feel comfortable to go to, it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money, and I think sooner rather than later, I'd like to get that on the calendar where we can meet with our neighbors and have a thoughtful conversation.
That's definitely a priority. Michael?
Jeff said it best. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I don't have any-
If you take that $15 million round, round number and think, okay, if you had to replace any one of the buildings in the school district, how much that would be to build a new school? It's a lot more than $15 million, you know, so the more you can kind of invest in the buildings, keep, you know, we've got four good buildings. We just need to invest in them, and as Michael said, you know, one of the, the school that needs the most help right now is the middle school, you know, which is why, you know, as, as we started noticing things over the last few years, it's like, okay, let's, let's go secure the exterior envelope of that building. Get the siding done, which we, you know, when brought before the boards and the towns this past year, let's go get on the MSBA roof replacement accelerator repairs list. We can get the exterior envelope secured, and there's a number of other projects within each of the buildings, including the middle school, to go and start updating, you know, the, the inside of that, you know, of that building as well as the other ones.
Right. Jeff?
And thank you for that, and I appreciate that, and agree wholeheartedly that we need to invest in, in the infrastructure. My feeling is I'm not so sure how sustainable the current model is, and money is money. You can only cut a dollar so many different ways. And our voters, I hear our voters, I think our other board, the other board members hear the voters, the trajectory, I think that this deal that we're involved in right now may not be sustainable. So that's, that's my position. I don't want to make it sound like I'm not interested in supporting the infrastructure in the buildings, because I am. Whole separate item is the sustainability of the, of the trajectory of the model that we're in currently. So that's, that's the only place I was going with that, Scott.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So thank you. We appreciate you coming tonight and going through all of it. It's a lot of work, so, thanks.
We'll be back.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to know who does your presentations, because I might have to do a couple. Those are really great, the little circles. Those are great.
Jeff, if I could, you're going to see those repeated for the town of Harwich.
Yes.
Yes.
I want copyright.
Send me the PowerPoint.
Some contract, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Madam Chair, for the next item, if I could start, I believe we have representatives from the Harwich Ecumenical Council for the Homeless present. So as you will recall, the board had this at your board meeting on July 8th. At that time, you took no action, but you did ask that the matter also be transmitted to the Affordable Housing Trust. I've done that, and Madam Chair, I know you know, being on that, the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust is taking up this matter at their meeting next Tuesday to determine if, what if anything, the town of Harwich should do. But before we get to the invited guests, I would offer that it does not appear to me in reading all the documentation that the process has been adhered to as the town would expect. So I know that this board and prior boards had opined about the timeliness of it. In your packet, and I believe, I don't want to make any assumptions, is Jamie Norcross present?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. So I assume that Attorney Norcross would be present, he, of course, being the author of the letter dated June 18th and received on June 21st, but had provided the relevant rider, and in that rider, if you have it in your documents, page 2 describes the right of first refusal process, and what it indicates is, if the current owner wishes to convey it, the first thing they should do is reach out to the select board and have an appraisal, and then have you go through the process. To my knowledge, that appraisal process hadn't been completed, and so through you, I think the town would argue that the 30-day rule, so-called, may not yet be in, in play, but certainly you should rely upon your trust's actions next week.
Right. Thank you, Joe.
If need be, I can translate some of those comments.
Anyone have any questions before I go to Jamie?
Welcome. Good evening. Jamie Norcross, representing HECC. With me this evening is Kim Borje, who's the executive director. I understand Mr. Powers' comments in terms of the terminology in the covenant. I've probably read it three or four times, but still not sure I understand it completely based on how it was written, but-
I probably read it 10 more times.
I think just to sort of, what precipitated entering into a purchase and sale agreement is HECC has owned this property since 1997. It had a long-term tenant over, for over 20 years, who recently left in April. The condition of the property is such that it requires a lot of work. Once HECC got possession of the property, went in, they discovered there's a lot of deferred maintenance that's necessary, and candidly, they don't have the financial means to undertake that work that would make it, in a condition that could be re-rented to a new tenant.[1772.97] in a condition that could be re-rented to a new tenant. They were introduced to a buyer, a local person who is, was looking for housing. And so, they entered into a purchase and sale agreement with this person so they could pursue their financing to see if they would qualify to acquire the property. It's also a person who's able and willing to undertake the work that would be necessary to the structure itself. So it's not just as simple as it's a building that you could sell or rent to somebody else, it's the work that goes into it, or would have to go into it, that precipitated HECC deciding they're gonna sell the property and then entering into a purchase and sale agreement. I understand the timing requirement with the appraisal. The buyer has obtained an appraisal, would have to get, I guess, authorization, but I assume we could submit that if you wanted to, necessary to restart the clock, so to speak, on the right of first refusal piece.
Okay, thank you. Questions from board members? Michael?
I guess it's through to the town administrator. I mean, I was one that raised a question about the fact that we're always notified after there's a purchase and sales, and maybe we should get to a process where if you sell it, we exercise what it says. I'm not really looking to hang anybody up on timing, because we've never done anything like this before. We've never had a housing trust before, but we also have never done anything like this before. Normally, it would be a town meeting vote, trust does have some money, but I think the trust has to have a fairly in-depth conversation. I guess the question that's coming out of all that, all those words is, how quickly do you want this to happen? I mean, do you have the week to wait for us to start the conversation about this? Or are we really hanging you up?
Well, we've already continued the closing date currently. I think, I think our buyer is certainly willing to hang in there. Obviously, you have rate locks and financing piece, which I'm not sure where they stand in terms of being able to extend that.
And the property being vacant, the longer we wait also.
Right, the conditions. So, I mean, in a perfect world, we'd be able to sell quite soon, but...
But the trust meeting on the 30th and giving you some, or giving this board some direction too, I mean, that's a week.
A week, and then I guess you have to meet after that, I assume.
Yeah, which would be following up to our next meeting, which would be the fifth.
The fifth.
I will say quickly, just to interject real quick, whether the town exercises the right of first refusal or not, the end result is the same, the property does remain
Remain.
on the shy list with the same covenants and restrictions in place, so I don't know if that...
Yeah, no, that's, it's a good point.
So whether you, either way, it's the same result.
Right.
Madam Chair, I'll just speak for myself, but I'm in favor of moving this forward and letting them move this deal forward.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I'm a hundred percent with Michael. I think it remains on the shy list, the outcome is the same. Through finding more information, as I've dug a little bit, and then your narrative tonight about the fact that there's an awful lot of work that needs to be done on the property, as long as this is deed restricted and remains on the shy list, I don't think the town, I wouldn't want the town to own this, in my opinion. I think it can continue the way it's going.
Pete?
I just want to clarify, does it remain deed restricted?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it does.
It's not a perpetuity, no.
No.
It's a forty-year deed restriction that started in 1991, so it's got about seven years left.
So, just tossing things around, if the town were to exercise its right, would you have the ability to put an extension onto that?
Well, I'll go to, I don't know that there's gonna be an extension onto it, but the question would be, is the trust interested?
So, with an affordable restriction, if the town were to acquire the property, would we have any say over extending the affordable restriction on the property?
So, my understanding is yes, however, I want to qualify my remarks if I could. You have a specific location, you have a specific organization, there are several properties, not all of which come under HECC, where we've had this in the past, somewhere Habitat, somewhere others. When you read this deed rider in particular, it's talking about, at the time, the town had the Harwich Community Development Corporation for the purpose of developing and expanding homeownership opportunities for eligible purchasers and for contributing to the development of affordable housing. So that's why the town still has the right of first refusal. We no longer have the HCDC, but we do, however, as members have said, have the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund and other mechanisms in place. One of the things that would be of consideration by the trust next week is, yes, if the town through the trust acquired this, the town through the trust could permanently deed this affordable. We want properties to remain on the shy, the subsidized housing inventory, AKA the shy list, that would get us there. So I'm not opining on whether or not the board should exercise your right of first refusal. What I'm trying to say is, given what I've heard boards say before about the timing, there is a codified process that on the one hand should be honored going forward, but on the other hand, you have a successor to the HCDC, and it's the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And if these restrictions lapse, that means the town's losing more properties on the shy list. And so my remarks aren't particular to the transaction, small comfort for a Kim and Jamie, but more to the overall process.
Thank you.
I hope that answered.
It does, it does, and that's where I'm struggling, because within seven years, this could just fall off the list and never return. So, there's my struggle. Sorry, Jeff.
No, I, more information, I didn't understand that it came off the shy list or the deed restriction was for another seven years. I was under the impression it was in perpetuity.
No, and so, and currently it's on the agenda, as Joe referenced earlier, for the 30th on the trust's agenda. So I think it should at least be vetted by the trust and then come back to the board, so.
Yeah, that's fair, I don't think two weeks is gonna be a huge issue for us. If the town decides to exercise it, then that's, you know, again, from HECC's perspective, that's fine as well.
Yeah, all right, perfect.
And in the meantime, that appraisal?
Yes, I just have to just check with the buyer, since it was part of their loan process, make sure that we can release it, but I don't foresee that'll be a problem.
And if you want to redact anything and send it to me, I can make sure that we continue those redactions.
Right, I appreciate that.
We wouldn't want to expose anything with the current parties that are in agreement.
Sure.
Right.
But Madam Chair, if I could, before you conclude this, really for me, the message that I've taken from this, and I do want to thank Attorney Norcross, perhaps he regrets it, but his thorough nature allowed me to get more information than we've had before on these matters. So, separate from Ten Driftwood, it is gonna have me work with our housing advocate to look at any other properties that are on the shy list to see what the situation may be.
Right.
Because all of this emanated from a town meeting act back in 1994, I believe, where that town meeting was, excuse me, 1990, where that town was, town meeting was actively trying to do things for affordable housing. So we need, in my opinion, to at least honor what was being done in the past.
No, I think that, you know, and again, not to try to make anything more difficult, but just to vet it as we should moving forward as well, so, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I just want to, I want to say it one more time, you know, the housing trust, it's great that we have that mechanism, they have not had one of these conversations yet. We don't have a building crew lined up, we don't have anything lined up. We're gonna hold this project up for two weeks for them to have an initial conversation when there's no plan, when we've been sitting on whatever we've been sitting on trying to get one project done for how many years now? So, I am not a fan of holding off on this, I'm gonna make a motion if I don't get a second, I don't get a second. But I think that this should be moved forward for them. The circumstances weren't ideal, because we're finding out about it now, and I certainly understand what Pete's saying about it falling off the shy list. But, again, to start the conversation with the trust about whether or not it wants to buy this with no plan on fixing it or no mechanism, nothing set up, seems to me that we're just wasting time. With that, I would make the motion that the town waive the town's right of first refusal on affordable housing home resale for the sale at Ten Driftwood Lane.
A second for discussion. Sorry. But I, you know, I'm on both sides here. I don't know whether or not, I don't know how I feel honestly about the town entering into a building that needs a ton of repair. I also understand the timeline and everything, I also understand that maybe the process wasn't followed properly. And if nothing more, the process should be followed properly, I think. And the town should be getting right of first refusal. Yeah, that's what I have to say about it.
Pete, do you have any?
Suppose you can answer this question, because I'm not looking for specifics, but there was a mortgage issued on this property, or a grant, approval, I should say?
I don't think there was a mortgage on that particular.
You mean for the prospective buyer?
For the prospective buyer.
Yeah, they've received a commitment for...
So what type of disrepair are we talking about? What a bank would...
He's also getting a, I should have made...
He's getting a construction loan with that to be able to do the repairs. He wouldn't be able to purchase the property and the condition's the same right now.
In conjunction with, okay.
So, the roof needs to be replaced, the bathroom needs to be redone. There's a hole in the floor, you can see right through to the basement, the joists there is flooded. So you've got a major bathroom repair. There's a lot of stuff that was left in the backyard from the previous tenant that had been there for a long time that needs to be removed, and a couple of sheds that should really be removed for safety, health and safety reasons. Trim repairs, I'm trying to read the writing of the contractor here.
Oh, yeah, keep it up.
It's flooring, the basement, there's quite a significant repair that needs to be done where some water had entered the property. Basic plumbing, it says, the list goes on. It's in what my maintenance staff, when we went in, because HEC would have kept the property, the problem is, the property itself has a restriction on it for rent. We can only rent it for thirty-six and a half percent of fair market rent base, is what the deed restates right now. So for the low amount that you get for rent in there, for us to make that kind of repairs to it and still only, it's a low-producing property anyway, it's just not, it's not something that HEC would want to remain in the portfolio. So like I said, we normally in the process, you talked a lot about the process, didn't expect a buyer to come in, but seeing the condition of the property and then somebody coming in saying, hey, you know, I qualify here, I fit the criteria, I can do those repairs myself, I'm in the end of housing, you know, it just seemed like a win-win, and, you know, that is, you know, why.
Go ahead, Pete, I don't want to cut you off.
No, no.
So the end user is interested in doing a lot of the work?
He's gonna do all the work himself.
Okay.
So he takes a construction loan for half of the cost of what he would need, so that he can do the work himself.
So if we extend, sorry.
Well, no, I just want to point out that this is, this came back on our agenda, because we had a discussion about bringing it back and following a process, because the process, and no, not you guys, but in general, the process isn't normally followed. So, in that regard, then that, that's what made it then go to the trust. So, understood that, you know, I understand Michael's point of view. The only thing I'll say is that technically, once it goes to the trust, if the trust doesn't have an interest in it, that's one week. Yes, it comes back to the board, but we're happy to communicate, and you can watch the trust meeting to see what the feedback is. So I don't think technically, depending on what the trust decides to do, you're necessarily even two weeks out. So, that's just, I'm just pointing out that we brought this back because it came to an agenda because of the process, and the fact that it was pointed out, we usually don't hear about these in a timely manner, and there's a reason that we should be vetting these. And we, the question was brought up, well, why aren't we looking at this? So we are. So I'm just reminding you that that's why, it wasn't me, but I'm just pointing that back out because I do think it's important, we're talking about policies and procedures that we're trying to clean up that process. Michael?
Just comment, message sent, but I don't think, we can't even get a traffic study on Queen Anne Road, and we're gonna talk about, we're gonna talk about fixing up dilapidated homes. So my motion is my motion, and no more discussion, for me.
Did you have more, Jeff?
Yeah. I see purchase price is $280,000.
It's 275, there's a seller credit in there for the closing cost.
I just know how much it's costing to build a house right now, you're in the business. I don't, I don't see how the town could, and I know how much, I'm learning how much municipal, the cost of things that are done on the municipal level are just exorbitant. And I don't know how we could, and I'm not against subsidizing housing, I'm just saying that, you know, at $275,000 with another probably 250 to 300 to get it up and running, we're gonna be renting it at 36% of...
Yeah, 36% of fair market. So, fair market for three bedrooms, roughly two thousand, a little more than 2,000, you're renting it for just under 900.
Right, so, anyway, that's where I sit with that, I don't see the value.
So, we've got the motion and the second for discussion.
It is going to a town employee that needs housing too, I don't know if that...
Again, I'm not opposed to subsidizing, I just think we don't have a process in place to do that right now. Not to say we couldn't begin that, but...
No, so we have a motion and a second.
Jeff, can you clarify?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't think I quite followed, as far as you're talking about us subsidizing.
Well, I've always thought that to encourage affordable workforce, attainable housing, I've always thought that the town should take a more proactive approach. Maybe using a piece of property, getting into a public-private partnership with a builder, where the cost of the total amount of the project is reduced by the town contributing something. That's all I'm saying. And in this case, I'm just gonna make this up and throw numbers out there. If this was a $550,000 finished product that we can rent for $900,000, that clearly would be the subsidy that the town would be giving, is the delta to cover...
Nine hundred?
What's that?
Not 900,000.
No, $900.
Yeah.
So fair market value's 2,300, and we can only rent the property for $900, thank you. Then the delta would be what I'm calling subsidizing.
Gotcha.
If that makes any sense.
Yeah, yeah, it makes some sense.
It just comes down to math at this point.
Math, yeah, I'm not very good at math.
No, I wasn't saying you weren't good at math.
No, I was not.
Because I'm not, I got a crayon over here.
I didn't take that, I didn't take that.
Just did this with a crayon.
I got my shoes off.
You're mad, just doing math.
So, you know, I struggle, and I said it already, but I struggle with the seven-year window left in affordability. But I think Michael's spot on, you know, we don't have the ability to turn this thing around and make it what it needs to be. So, as much as I'm conflicted, I'm inclined to support Michael's motion.
Okay, so I'm gonna just call the vote then, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. And not for any other reason, but I'm looking for a process, so.
I'll notify the trust tomorrow that that is unnecessary at their meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Sell, sell, sell.
All right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it, have a great night. You too. And then, next item, Select Board Member Howell to provide an update on the HARC charge. As I shared, Don said and shared the item you have that's in our packet and in front of you. Any revisions that anyone sees fit, he felt that this was his final attempt, and so whatever changes anyone wanted to propose, he was fine going ahead with that. So I'll open it up to any discussion by any board members on any edits that they would like to see, if any.
My only comment, first to thank, publicly thank Select Board Member Howell for putting this together. I still have a problem with it, and we have an ADA coordinator. And if you look at this, there's really no, in my mind, there's really nothing for them to do without somebody really directing them to do something. I see some bullet points on here and some busy work. I still, even with the, by direction of the Select Board, it really does say that they're gonna go out and police the committees and departments. And I don't, I don't think we should be pushing that forward. And I would also love to know what our ADA coordinator thinks of this charge and the need, because I would think that we'd be setting Megan, our Assistant Town Administrator, up to work with said committee. And does she want said committee, and does she need said committee? Or is it just busy work for the board, from the Board of Selectmen, because we think we need to make it? So, I'm not, I'm not supporting it, but I think Don did a good job writing it, and he did take out a bulk of the language about the committee basically being the police. So he did a great job, it's an accurate reflection of what he and I discussed, I just can't support it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Pete, you have anything?
No, I really don't have an issue with it, and Michael, if you could clarify for me, you indicated that, I'm sorry, I'm losing, losing your word, your verbiage, but...
The police part of it?
Yeah, yeah.
So, under scope and procedure paragraph two, may vote to make recommendations to the Select Board to ensure that all programs and services offered by the town of Harwich are accessible. How are they gonna do that without going to all of those programs and asking them questions? Or employees that are part of the programs, i.e. Community Senator Carolyn Carey. Again, it doesn't jump out and scream that, but it says it. And again, having an ADA coordinator... it doesn't jump out and scream that, but it says it. And, and again, having an ADA coordinator and employee, that that is their function, I would find it hard to believe that we're not. And why do we need a committee to tell us that we're not?
Okay.
Especially without the consent of said ADA coordinator.
Yeah. Unless you want to reply.
Sure.
Okay. I, I agree with Michael on most of it. I, I think that the third leg of the stool is the public. And if the, we, we, we have a Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee. They are constituted and they are ready to work. To Michael's point, to make recommendations to the Select Board to ensure that all programs and services offered by the town of Harwich, town of Harwich are accessible, that information could come from the public by making a call to the conduit, to the Select Board, which is the committee. So while I agree with a lot of what you're saying, I still think that, that this committee is in place to hear from the public, not just to go out and, and it is, Michael, you're right, there, it is a little like they can go and talk to Carolyn and kind of audit the buildings and such. And I, I don't think that was in Don's spirit, but how it's written may give that impression to the committee. But I still say the public needs a place to go if they've got questions or concerns. And that, if I'm mistaken, if I'm not mistaken, is part of what all of our committees' charge is, to hear from the public, so.
So I think also that, you know, we've been batting this around for quite a while, so I don't see any harm in asking for input from Megan, just to sort of have a final review of it and get her input and then have that discussion brought back where we're in agreement with the wording is and, you know, Don made a good effort here. And so why don't we, we can certainly do that if the board's in favor of doing that, is to not take action until we've run it through. Megan?
Well, there's an existing charge, correct, for this, for this group?
Well, so just some of the background on this group. At one point it went to seven and then that was supposedly to help get the quorum. And then they couldn't meet the seven, so then it went back to five. So I don't, I mean, in terms of what the original charge was, there's been so many drafts, I don't even really recall. But to you?
Yeah, so, yeah, it's, we had like a mass resignation and it was really due to the frustration about really having nothing to do. And, and there was a fairly lengthy charge of busy work that we come to find out, we actually already had compiled the list through DPW of what needed to be, what walks needed to be done. So a ton of frustration. With the mass resignation, we just haven't reappointed anybody to the committee until we straighten this charge out.
So is the committee vacant at this point?
Pretty much, yes. There's, there's one or two members.
Yeah.
And they're still on the list.
And we've, and we've, we've reduced the quorum down to five. For a little while it was really, really active. And then there was some turmoil based on really nothing to do or not, not feeling they weren't being listened to. And Jeff, to your point about the public having a conduit, this isn't like the Bike Ways Committee in my mind. This is something that's very serious and could be libelous to the town. And that's why we have an ADA coordinator. So this isn't just a, you know, a bike club making, making the recommendations based on routes and crossings and, and, you know, based on that. This is ADA and I, and I preference it because I don't want to be labeled anti-handicapped. My father is handicapped. My grandmother was handicapped from the time she was five years old. I've dealt with it my entire life. I'm pro, pro anything we can do for the handicapped. But we do have an ADA coordinator. And Madam Chair, I'm not trying to hold it up. If the board members make a motion and you pass it, Don did, Don did a great job. I've only expressed, not trying to hold it.
No, no, I, I'm just saying in the sense of having Megan's input because we've batted this around so many times.
Yeah.
But I don't think we actually finalized anything to give to Megan to get her input. And I think it's valuable input. She may share the same feeling of moving this forward or, or not. I just don't know. So I leave it to whoever wants, if anyone wants to make a motion.
Well, I'll just say, I'm, I'm a little concerned with how long it took us to even get to this point. It's been months.
Yeah, it has.
Just to get to a draft that now we have to have our ADA person look at.
You don't have to. That was just a suggestion.
But no, I, I think that's a great idea. I think that's a great idea. So I move that we table this. I'm sorry, Joe did, threw you in the chair.
Yeah, just before the board acts, at, at the risk of being labeled anti-committee, I would tell you that if this committee did not exist or was not repopulated, the town is meeting all of our obligations under both the federal and state requirements through having an access, Americans with Disabilities Act ADA coordinator. That's why I've named the Assistant Town Administrator to do the same. So because they have not functioned, the function still exists. Staff takes care of it. To the earlier comments about the second paragraph under scope and procedure, we, the town, most often through administration, get inquiries from people that are seeking accommodations. And Megan works through her contacts at the state on ADA accessibility to try to get those accommodations met. So for me, it's really a question of what do you need the committee to do for you because staff is already doing these functions?
Mm-hmm.
I hope that was clear. Having said that, there's no objection asking the Assistant Town Administrator for her thoughts.
Yeah. So I leave it to the board. That was just a suggestion I made. So just knowing that we never came up with the final to then have her input. But the board can either table it, take action, whatever you want to do. Is there any consensus?
I'm okay, reluctantly, I'm okay with tabling it. I will state that I am in favor of the committee. Whether the makeup of the committee should be five or three, you know, we struggle to get people. I, I understand all that. But I do like the conduit for the public to have this opportunity, especially at their meetings, to come and listen and participate. So I am in favor of keeping the committee. And if the group would rather have the ADA officer take a look at it prior to approval, I'm fine with, with that delay.
Okay. So we'll, is that the consensus that we'll ask Megan to look at it when she's back?
Yes.
All right? Okay, great.
Agreed.
Thank you. And what's our last? Oh, the Queen Anne Traffic, which we did get that email update from Steve Rhodes that I mentioned earlier.
So I haven't seen that yet. I will put out there that it has been a struggle trying to get folks to talk to me about traffic generally.
Yeah, he just, the email didn't come in till at 4:30 this afternoon, so. But we can have the, any other discussion. I'm just noting the fact that Steve Rhodes did get back to, to Danielle. Maybe you're not on that actually. Oh, no, you are.
Who is Steve Rhodes?
He's from VHB.
VHB.
So if I could, there are two Steves. So Steve Rhodes, no joke, same spelling, is our traffic engineer with VHB. He interacts with Steve Tupper, who is the Cape Cod Commission's Deputy Director, but also the Transportation Manager. So typically I talk to both Steves on traffic matters. So Rhodes is our engineer. Tupper works for the county.
Right.
Or the commission, excuse me.
So what's Steve Tupper been doing?
Not responding.
Okay. And does somebody maybe reach out to his boss at some point, and I would volunteer to do that, to ask why the commission isn't responding to a request from a town on a potential mess that we're voting in different directions to support or not support? But when do we, when do we as a board say enough? It's been two and a half months since I brought it up.
So I'm just deferring to Joe because I haven't been in contact with Steve. I haven't reached out, but that's been your roadblock, correct?
Correct. And it's, I think it's fair to say that they have not been steady partners lately on trying to get those meetings done. If I could, you were also been made aware as we were that there is a conversation that, well, I shouldn't say conversation. It's a public bodies meeting and they'll determine who gets to speak and on what. But the Cape Cod Commission is taking up the, what I refer to as the Love Lane Project Thursday afternoon, no earlier than 3:00 PM. But that may be the first opportunity for the town of Harwich to weigh in on concerns that we have with the commission on traffic.
Right.
I guess.
I intend for one, if, if recognized and if the board's not so disinclined to register those concerns.
I'm all for it. Back to VHB. So maybe, maybe a conversation on a higher level with the commission on why we're not getting any response on, on a, you know, potential bad situation and, and not just related to Love Lane. But obviously, we've got a lot of members of the public here speaking about this and there is growing concern about all these projects meeting. And then VHB, if I'm not mistaken, we pay them, don't we?
Correct.
So, and we give them other work, don't we?
VHB?
Yeah, fair amount probably.
Yeah, any, any of our stormwater stuff?
Maybe whomever is Steve Rhodes's boss should get the phone call also that says that this is a potential disaster for the town of Harwich and they need to respond to it. And if they can't respond to it and don't want to do it, then let's replace them.
Well, I think we would, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but wouldn't we need a contract with VHB to do a traffic study? Is that how we would?
I, I believe the town already has a general engineering contract with VHB.
So that could fall under that.
That includes stormwater, roads and other projects.
Okay, so we would need a specific.
I believe we have them under contract to the, to the member's point.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then I guess the next question is where he's responded about having, you know, availability. It would be good to have him on our next, on the eight-five.
Correct.
Meeting agenda.
The expectation of me and staff was that they would, folks would be present tonight so we could have a deeper conversation about traffic. The timing of the.
From VHB?
From VH, well, the invitation was to both VHB and the Cape Cod Commission, to be very blunt about it.
But you never heard back until 4:30 tonight?
From VHB, correct. The last I had heard before I took time last week is that he wasn't available a week before. So I asked staff to put out the invitation specifically for this evening. And to my knowledge, neither I nor staff had ever heard back. So I'd be, I'll be keenly interested to look at my email after 4:30 tonight to see what that is. But if I could also put it out there, we are going to have a chance, I, sorry, I keep saying that. I hope we have a chance Thursday afternoon to convey to anyone else outside of Harwich the concerns that we have legitimately on any number of projects in and around our town that impact our town. So I'll be the optimist and say, we've heard from the commission for Thursday afternoon. We've now heard from our road vendor for sometime soon. That's great, but it hasn't been there for the last several weeks. And then Madam Chair, generally to Queen Anne, I have another brief update, but it's not as material as what you're talking about right now.
Well, I just want to mention that in this email, he referenced Steve Tupper, that he wanted to, he would like to catch up with Steve Tupper.
So if, if I may, I, you know, it's, the board by consensus wants to have a traffic study. We've already mentioned the, mentioned the intersections that we want to study and we've mentioned why and we've mentioned the projects. I'm not a huge fan of waiting another two weeks to get a runaround or to get on a schedule. So we've given, I believe, the town administrator enough latitude to come up with a contract for a traffic study that we all agree we need. And we've already identified all of the, the moving parts and I'm, and I'm sure that you can look back at the conversations or are very versed on what intersections we're talking about. I'd love to have the conversation, but I'd much rather it come in a contract form or in a timeline form that we're not going to wait until October.
No, what I was going to say is that we should also add, and again, understanding that it's a mass DOT thing, but we should also get data on the Route 28 Harwich Port improvements too, because they're equally important.
I, I would like to come back on the fifth, if we're coming back on the fifth with something of substance and not a conversation.
Well, I'd like to also have him here.
Great. And if they can't be, then we should give the town administrator the latitude to hire somebody else.
I think that message needs to be conveyed.
I agree.
Anything more on Queen Anne?
So just generally, if I could, and I, I did not catch the individual's name, but at your last meeting, a member of the public came up and she indicated that she was aware that some real estate transactions had, had closed on Queen Anne down by, is that Old Main Street? I don't know what to call it. I drive it every day.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so I've been watching for property transactions on that corridor. So her information was incredibly helpful and I want to thank that individual because what I've discovered is the Pine Oaks Village project is, there's a different name, an entity that was used to purchase property. It's not the same properties that we were presented last year, neither April nor August. But it, it gave me the opportunity to reach out to representatives from Pine Oaks and to ask them where they were on that project. And they said that they are intending to continue to move forward on what we knew as Pine Oaks Village Phase Four and indicated that they were working with both the state Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities.
Excuse me?
The former DHCD and the subsidizing agencies. So we are still keenly watching for that 30-day period that we have to respond on traffic and all the other concerns. So based on that information from that resident, at our department head meeting on July 11th, I directed everybody to keep their eyes posted. Technically, it would go to you as the chief executives, but if anybody hears anything on that project, because I think their traffic studies are stale-dated and need to be updated whether or not we augment with ours and vice versa. So I want to first thank the individual. Again, I didn't catch her name, but that was exceedingly helpful. And now that I know that there's a holding company taking these transactions, we can get more information in advance.
Thank you, Joe.
And I hope that all comes to bear on the conversations that the board members are looking for.
Okay. Town administrators?
A big contract for you folks to do first.
Oh, sorry, I jumped over that.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the contract with Enterprise Equipment Company, Inc. for boiler replacement at 204 Sisson Road in the amount of $519,350.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Only one question, and, and I know this has come up in the past. We didn't try through any green, get any green communities money on this contract, did we, or was it not eligible?
I believe according to Sean, it was not eligible. We're already in the green communities, so he's always looking for those opportunities.
Thank you, Joe.
And this is two boilers. Correct?
Yes, we're moving and replacing two heating boilers, technically maybe three, two heating boilers and a domestic hot water boiler.
Okay.
Within that building.
So moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. Now, town administrators report.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, with your indulgence, I typically wouldn't necessarily do this in this manner, but it gives me great pleasure to announce a recent hiring to assist in our assessing department. But the individual, I think, is going to be known to all of you. So Dan Stidell, the son of Ann Stidell, our dear friend, and of course, our friend Art, his dad, agreed to and has been hired by me to be the administrative assistant in the Harwich Assessing Department. He, based on the timeframe, actually started today. Dan's a great young man and the Stidell family's a great family. So I think it's just at the risk of embarrassing him because I know I can't embarrass Art. It's great to have Dan back on staff with us.
Thank you, Joe. That's wonderful.
Very excited about that.
Excellent.
And that concludes my report.
Select Board Member report, Pete?
Nothing tonight.
Jeff?
I have nothing.
Michael?
Nothing.
I just want to say that although I didn't get to attend the circus, it looked amazing and it was such a great setup. And I hope they come back next year. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Excuse me, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Might I add something?
Well, can you just identify yourself first?
Yeah, my name is Dan Baker and I, this is regarding One Love Lane and you guys were talking about traffic studies. Yeah, my name is Dan Baker and I, this is regarding one Love Lane and you guys were talking about traffic studies and I just wanted to ask if, if the board either has or has heard of a traffic study that was supposed, was supposed to be presented by HAC from VAI, a professional group, to the town of Dennis?
So we do have a, we do have a traffic study that we received, related, not, not shared directly with us, but through our police chief Kevin Concedine and information that had been shared, so we can certainly post that on the website.
Okay, so you have the one that HAC was supposed to present to Dennis?
I believe that's what it was, yes.
Okay, all right. All right, that would be great if you could post that, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't know if the individual's still on, my recommendation is that we would put a link referencing to the town of Dennis. We're not the owners of those documents, they're not ours and I cannot verify the veracity or accuracy of them. So if it's okay with the board, we can put a link to all the documentation that the town of Dennis has received.
Thank you, that's fine.
I just ask on the same topic, that gets sent to the board members again?
The link?
Yeah.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, did we ever vote to adjourn?
Yeah.
If you had a motion, you'd have a second.
Okay.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.